Recording in progress.
All for order, the meeting of the Randall City Council, roll call please.
Mayor Garne?
Here.
Mayor Sam Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Orr?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Woodall?
Here.
Please stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Before anything else, I need to make a motion to add the following on this item to the agenda titled Resolution Number 1567-2023, proclaiming the existence and declaration, then declaring, a local winter storm emergency. Two, Resolution Number 1568-2023, amending Resolution Number 1102-211, Water Bill Claim Adjustment Policy. This is pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2, Subsection B.2, because the need to take action arose subsequent to the agenda being posted. This item requires, these items require two-thirds vote of the council. Is there a second?
I said.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Is it working right now?
Not that.
Oh, test it, you have to do the.
Yeah, I'm doing it.
I'm doing it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm doing it.
Okay, motion carries five zero. But now we will move on to public presentation. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter down on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council staff is not allowed under the Ralph and Brown Act. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration of the council direct, unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Anyone like to address the council? Saying none, are there any hand raised? Are there any emails? Saying none, and I will close public presentations and move to the consent calendar. Would anyone like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Any council member? No. Any member of the public? Oh, hand raised? None. Saying none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? So moved. We have a motion and there's that, I'll say. Do you have a motion in the second, please vote? Motion carries five zero. We will move on to reports and staff communication. City manager, staff update. City manager, page 23 in our package.
Thank you, Mayor Garne, members of the council. So I'm going to provide a earthquake update for, for the group and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have. In addition, staff is available to answer any departmental specific questions that you may have. I want to talk a little bit about water, wastewater, and then we'll move to housing. As, as the council's aware, there's been significant damage to the water distribution system. Unfortunately, the treatments apparatuses are all working properly, including our backup well site, which we have used quite heavily during the storms. And however, as the council's been well aware for many years now, there are significant deficiencies on the distribution side. So years ago, we put in an application with the State Water Resources Control Board to fund a capital improvement project, replacing much of the smaller diameter lines throughout the community. The council may recall back around 08, the backbone of main trunks of the system were replaced. However, the small diameter piping has not been replaced. And so we have heard through the water board that the city has been prioritized for a $12 million grant to replace a significant portion of the city's water distribution system. At this point in time, we expect an agreement with the state of California that spells out the details of that by the end of March. So we're looking forward to that, possibly getting it out to bid shortly thereafter and potentially construction this summer on, on those portions of the, of the project. And I want to thank Senator McGuire and his staff and the Cal OES for helping to kind of push that item over the finish line, or at least prevent it from getting delayed. Those projects take a long time to get through the state's finance system and get to, get to construction. Also, Burke Street today is basically essentially a failed water distribution pipe under that street from top to bottom. We will be working with local contractors to install a temporary water distribution system in anticipation of, of the SIP program, being able to come in and fully replace those lines, including water distribution to the individual property lines as well. But that particular line has become significantly problematic and time consuming. And I'm sure Mr. Johnson could tell you all about it. Moving on to wastewater. Obviously, a significant amount of the damage that the city has received is related to wastewater. So the city is currently seeking funds for the painter's street pipe upsizing. That's the final leg, segment of the collection into the plant. We do believe by correcting that, it would be the shortest, quickest method to end sanitary sewer overflows during significant rain events. We believe that that can be implemented in relatively short, provided that the state provides that funding. There are, and would appear to be significant damages to the collection system throughout Riedel as a result of the earthquake, though certainly the system was not performing well before the earthquake. But we will have hopefully a camera crew out here on Monday to start doing visual inspections of the piping to help further define that damage and put a price tag on it for the state. But there are also additional damages to the wastewater system, including our chlorine generator and the chlorine contact basin. The chlorine contact basin is certainly a very large piece of infrastructure, probably in the multi millions of dollars to repair or replace. There's also developing road damage that we intend to also investigate that appears to be getting worse on certain roads. And certainly a fair number of cracks, new cracks in the road infrastructure on Blue Slide, Monument and other locations that we are investigating. So dialing back to housing, this is by far the largest challenge out of this earthquake. Tonight, over 100 hotel rooms are in use for the displaced right now. So current estimates are approximately 200, at least 200 individuals are using those hotel rooms. That process in availability is being run by the county with a commitment from the state to reimburse the county for those hotel rooms. Over 324 structures have been impacted by both the 1220 event and the New Year's Day earthquake. So that includes 64 rent tag structures and over 92 dwelling units impacted, a couple of which were not occupied at the time. But based on those numbers, you know, I think 200 is a very safe number to estimate for, for the displaced for the earthquake. The big challenge that Riedel faces in this particular situation is that there is no federal designation of this event, of this disaster, after it's a federally declared disaster. This is a significant problem. As that means that there's going to be very limited funding available for private structures. We're working with our partners at the county who are, are working with us to develop a series of options for people to explore in terms of repairing their properties or other options available for renters. These options are going to be extremely diverse and varied, and in many cases will be income based. And are, are in, in many cases are really programs that were already in place, but are now being prioritized and tried to be channeled into a disaster response. So some of those potential funding sources include CD UG program income for owner occupied housing loans, home program funding for low income housing. The county has committed a million dollars in ARPA funding, which is relatively flexible, especially when it comes to government money. There are also private philanthropic donations into the six figures that are coming this way. Those are by far the most mobile of funding sources. There's also some USDA lending programs for both replacements of repairs or financing of repairs and also replacement. We also have a presentation coming up here from the Small Business Administration regarding lending assistance. This is one of, by far, the quickest and seems to be in early stages, one of the most effective programs for assistance for the residents of Riedel. In addition, for the business community, there are some access to the California Capital Access Programs for small businesses, as well as other programs that we're looking at that will be presented at the next town hall with Senator McGuire, which should happen before the end of the month. So last week, I believe it was on Thursday evening, we did have a town hall to discuss this issue. And again, just reiterating, in this particular disaster, the complicating factor is that there is no federal designation. We do not meet certain federal requirements to come here or to, for FEMA to come here and provide a more robust response. And so we have to be creative in terms of how Riedel responds and how the community responds as a whole, Humble County as a whole. And one thing I will say in this process and working with Humble County OES, the sheriff, Cal OES, as well as this private philanthropies, Riedel is not alone. And so I think there are going to be a lot of people working together to try to present these diverse array of options for property owners to access moving forward. That being said, I don't want to try to sugarcoat anything because this is going to be a very difficult process and and it's quite possible that not everybody will receive help. So in this, in this process, it's really going to be important that we have a lot of community cooperation, consistent vision for the council, because the ramifications of these seismic events are going to last a long time. They fundamentally have changed the game here in Riedel, potentially for a significant amount of time budgetarily. And obviously, the numerous individuals displaced is one of the largest, most impactful disasters in recent Humble County history, bar none. So with that, the staff report includes other additional information from your department here in the city. I'm happy to try to answer any questions and after this, after we get through the staff report, we will have a presentation from Cynthia Cowell, who is representing the Small Business Administration, one of the bright points in the response here. And so I want to make sure that we get to her and her presentation. So, thank you, Mayor Garne.
Thank you, Mayor here. Um, Mayor Woodall? Um, I was going to ask, do we have any idea what the likelihood is of getting any kind of funding for the painter's street upsizing? Might be hard to say now.
Unless the pipeline itself was damaged in the earthquake, which remains undetermined, it may not qualify specifically for that, but there may be other funding streams that, that could be tapped into for that. So that's kind of each individual house, rental property, each individual piece of infrastructure has a lot of different stones that need to be put in to build the hearth to, to get them repaired. And so that one, you know, I think we're, we're really just starting to look at that as to where some of those options exist, but we do have support directly from Cal OES, who has been approaching the, the water board to drum up various options.
Thank you. That's it for me. Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, um, was the, the money that was, that we received, the $12 million for the water? We were already applying for it.
Yeah, just to, for clarification, we have not received the, the funding yet. We do expect an agreement to be in place at the state of California by the end of March and be able to then potentially put out a bid for a project in, in April. But again, that was funding that we were already seeking, that was in, in the queue. It just was perhaps set up or prevented from being continued to be kicked down the road.
Okay, so it was what we were already, basically what we were doing just got moved up. That's all I have, you know, the question.
And you, Councilmember Woodall? You mentioned CDU G funding. Would that be like a use being that for people who qualify low income, they can get the funding for their houses?
Yeah, so there's potential to do owner occupied rehab loans. Again, those are loans. It depends on a pretty wide array of different qualifications that people have to meet, and part of that is in.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Orr.
Uh, no question.
Is there any question from the members of the public? Any hand raised? No? Okay, um, and I think that brings, it's important, I'd like to thank staff and Eric. It's never on the way far aside, so thank you. We haven't, you know, dealt with that, and it's bad, we appreciate it. And we will move on to special presentation. Small Business Administration, welcome Cynthia Cowell. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor Garne and all the councils. The Small Business Administration offers low interest government loans to businesses of all sizes, to private nonprofit organizations, including churches, to homeowners and renters to help recover from the earthquake. To date, we have approved 20 loans. These are all home loans. We're still working on business loans, totaling $624,600. These are for homeowners and renters to repair or replace their personal property and their homes. For homeowners, we can lend up to $200,000 to repair or replace their primary dwelling. For homeowners and renters, we can lend up to $40,000 to replace personal property, and that does include cars. That would be anything you would take with you when you move. That, that would be covered under personal property. For businesses, including landlords, we can lend up to $2 million for both physical damage to your property, your inventory, your fixtures, et cetera, and for economic injury. The, the business may or may not have suffered any physical damage in the earthquake, but if you were unable to be open or your customer base isn't coming in because they've evacuated, that could severely affect your bottom line, and especially after COVID. That can be very hard for a business. We want our businesses to stay in the town, in, in the area to keep the area vital. So that's, that's why we offer this assistance. We can offer this help for any uncompensated losses. So if, for example, you have earthquake insurance and, and and they're going to cover a certain amount, but you have a deductible that you have to pay, SBA can help with that deductible. Or if a homeowner does end up getting CDDG here grant money, we can't, we can't duplicate what you're going to be getting. So it's important that, that you work with your loan processor and with your, any other kind of in money coming in for repairs, so that everybody is staying abreast of what is available. With that, oh, I'm sorry. Our interest rates for this disaster are determined on a quarterly basis based on the crime rate. And the low rate for homeowners and renters is 2.313%, which is very reasonable. For businesses, it's 3.305% and for private nonprofit organizations is 2.375%. These rates, the, the low rates are offered to those who would have a hard time funding their own recovery. So if you can walk into a bank and say, I want a 2% loan to make repairs on my home, and your banker says, sure, no problem, then you don't need SBA yet. But most bankers are not going to offer you that low rate. We will work with you to determine if this rate is, is, if you, if you need the low rate or the higher rate. And we also have mitigation funds available. If there's any way you can firm up your building so this doesn't happen again, maybe with ties on the studs, things of that nature, we, we have those funds available. If you have a mortgage on the damaged dwelling, we can help refinance that mortgage if it'll help you call to apply for a loan. And with that, is there any questions? I'll be happy to wait. No questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here and helping our community.
Thank you. I used to live in Fortuna, so I didn't really go all the way to my family.
Um, I'll come to council for questions. Councilmember Woodall?
Yeah.
Councilmember Wilson?
You're the, you know, are you one of the individuals that are officer or tenant or?
No, I'm not, but we do have three loan specialists that are there. They're there. It's at, I should have mentioned that it's at Runner Park. And it's in the recreation center. We're there from eight, 4:30 Monday through Friday until January 27th, at which time we will be going, packing up and going home or going to the next one.
Okay, that was my next question. Is that longer? Do you have a discount?
To go in there, yes. However, you have until March 8th to apply for a disaster loan. And you can do that online. You can go to, I think it's disaster assistance. Disasterloanassistance.sba.gov and apply online, or you can go to sba.gov/disaster and get in that way. You can also call our customer service line at 800-659-2955, and we can walk you through the, the application process. A lot of times you get in, it's not a very difficult program, but sometimes you just need someone to say, click this button, and they can help you with that.
They did that a little bit till March.
Yes.
Because I tried to do it in the same, but they want to go through an application on your phone, it wasn't very friendly.
Right, right. Well, so if you go, if you have your application number, if you started it online and, and you got stuck, just write down your application number, go on into the disaster loan outreach center, and we can help you there. A lot of people lost their internet or their computers, and so you can contact SBA at the 800-659-2955 number and ask us to mail you a paper application if you can't get into the disaster loan outreach center.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I went into the loan disaster center and the people, the representatives were very kind and very helpful. And I would advise anyone, as we were maybe, you know, in disaster, but now you're starting to drop in the queue because there's a lot of so you might want to, you might want to give it in there.
And all the loans are processed countrywide on a first ever service basis. So the sooner you get your application in, the faster we can process it.
Absolutely. Mayor Woodall? No questions, just thank you so much for being here. I mentioned we're our Chamber of Commerce a couple of weeks ago, and you've been out of course in the community. And we're really thankful for being here all week and, thank you so much. Councilmember Orr?
Uh, no questions, but the same thing.
My pleasure. Are there any questions from the public? Yes, Larry, oh, okay.
I know Larry, I was willing to be said that anyway. But how long does it take, once these applications are sent in, before something, before we hear back, will it take the longest process?
Well, like I said, the sooner you get it in, the faster. We've only been taking applications now for a little over two weeks. We've already approved a bunch of loans. We try to get back to the next day. It depends, of course, on workload. So the sooner you can get your application in, the faster we can call you back. Generally, we say three weeks from application to funding, it could be faster, it could take longer, it depends, it depends on the complexity of your application.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any hand raised? Any emails? I think we will thank you for being here. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Special call items. Approve the appointment of two council members to the Randall Traffic Committee, page 40 in our package. City manager.
Go ahead and turn this over to Karen.
Okay, at the last meeting, all the appointments were made, but somehow we just left off that one. It was highlighted on the back page, but it was kind of hidden under the statement. So it would be to see to appoint two members. Currently, we have Wilson, yeah. Currently, Councilmember Wilson is on, but we need to fill the other vacancy, or I don't know if he wants to stay on or not, but we need two people to serve.
I don't, I just must, they got high.
At the very top, the top of the secondary name is the. The traffic committee only needs us to leave it, so it could be months before you have a meeting or something else.
Two or three months? Um, did you understand? Councilmember Orr is willing to take the vacancy? Did you, did you want to take the vacancy?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm trying to, I thought, I had a good one.
Please mark it as.
Okay, so Councilmember Woodall, Councilmember Orr?
I'm so much.
And although she's quite to the ultimate, these committees sound like every member show up. Right, is that true? Yeah, we're safer. Okay, so. Thank you. And you, and you, and you, and you, Councilmember Woodall. Are there any questions from the members of the public? We'll finalize this. Okay, any hand raised, any emails? Okay, so. Now we'll move on to the second reading ordinance, the second reading by title only and approval of ordinance number three nine seven dash two zero two three, amending chapter five point four zero Cannabis Business Tax, section five point four zero twelve point two six zero, and seconds five point four zero point two nine zero of the Ria Del Municipal Code, page forty-three in our package. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes, members of the council. So ordinance three nine seven twenty twenty-three was duly introduced at your board meeting on January third of this year. The ordinance amends the cannabis business tax relevant sections to the Ria Del Municipal Code, requiring that farmers utilizing outdoor greenhouse cultivation techniques, which only occur on the Desmar Plateau, pay the previous growing season tax by March fifteenth of the following year. The amendment also allows the city to revoke or suspend their cultivation licenses or permits for failure to pay the previous growing season's taxes. So what we are requesting the council do is go ahead and open a public hearing, receive any public input, if any, deliberate, and then move to adopt ordinance number three nine seven.
Thank you, city manager. Um, are there any questions for the members of the public? Were there any hand raised, any emails? Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Orr, Councilmember Wilson? Then is there a motion to approve and adopt ordinance number two three nine seven dash two zero two three? So much. They have a motion in their second.
Oh, second.
A motion in the second, please vote. Motion carries five zero. And we will move on to item, what we call this, added item, resolution number one five six seven dash two zero two three, proclaiming the existence and declaring a local winter storm emergency. City manager.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Barnes, members of the council. So as we are well aware, in addition to the earthquakes, we have also had excessive rain events. The purpose of this particular resolution is to open us up to potential theme of funding in particular relation to these sanitary sewer overflows, but any other storm-related damages that we may have had or are currently in the process of having. With that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions of the council and return it back to the mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Orr.
No question.
Councilmember Woodall? No, I asked, I was earlier. Thank you, Councilmember Wilson.
I have one question.
Mayor Bruthem, no questions. Any members of the public? Any emails? And then as there, a motion to approve resolutions number one five six seven dash two zero two three, proclaiming the existence and clearing a local winter storm emergency. A motion in their second, second, a motion in the second. I think carries five zero. Now we'll move to resolution number one five six eight dash twenty twenty-three, amending resolution number one one zero two dash two zero one one, water bill claim adjustment policy. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes, members of the council. So obviously, with the earthquake, there have been a number of private line breakages throughout the community. And so those, particularly during an emergency, can go unaddressed for a period of time while, you know, just the overall disaster response overwhelms the available contractors and whatnot to work to remedy these spills, so or these leaks. So the the city already has a water claim adjustment procedure adopted by the Council twenty eleven. Fundamentally, it allows a fifty percent credit on the difference between an average historical water bill and the disputed amount based on the breaks and leakages. This item temporarily, in earthquake-related matters, expands that credit to one hundred percent upon application by an individual for the earthquake damage on December twentieth and the aftershock on January first, twenty twenty-three. The relevant sections. See, if you go to the second page of the resolution, is item E. It's really the only change to the document. So item E states for claims in which the damage was a result of this December twentieth, twenty twenty-two, or January first, twenty twenty-three earthquake event, one hundred percent of the difference between the average monthly bill and the high water bill representative of a water claim will be recredited regardless of adjustment amount. And if you go to the very last page of that emergency item, if you go to the final third of the page, you'll see a this is, this is the water claims adjustment form process, and on the back side, it states the only change to it is is the claim related to a December twenty-two or January twenty-three earthquake event, if yes, one hundred percent of the credit is to be applied. So it's just part of the paperwork process, maybe a little bit too much in the weeds. But it is rare that, I I I'm not even sure that over the past several years that we've even had one of these emergency items added to council agenda, let alone two at the same time. But we are getting close to the the next billing date and the next meeting or reading, and so we just want to be able to tackle this head on and get that process rolling for the public. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. We'll turn it back to Mayor Barnes.
Thank you, city manager. Um, Councilmember Orr? No, I just wanted to mention on this, it says, no claim shall be considered if the claimant is not current with payments of his or her monthly water bill as of the date that the claim is submitted. So it's important that people know that, yeah, people know that. Thank you. Uh, Mayor Bruthem?
Uh, no questions. I I think it's nice to try to help out residents in our time of need in any small way. I do want to use this sector of the interview for anybody listening. When we have an earthquake, make sure nothing's running. Go get your water meter. Step one. Thank you. Councilmember Orr?
No question.
Councilmember Wilson?
No question.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public with a question? Any? Okay, then is, is there a motion to go here? Is there a motion to approve? Resolution number one five six eight dash two zero two three, amending resolution number eleven oh two two eleven, water bill claim adjustment policy. So much. We have a motion in their second, second. We have a motion in the second, please vote. Motion carries five zero. And then then bring those to council reports. Mayor Bruthem?
Thank you. I went to a Chamber of Commerce meeting on January sixth, which somehow feels like it was three months ago. So we did receive a presentation from the Small Business Administration, which was very lovely, and I'm so glad to be back here. Let's see, the chamber received a five thousand dollar donation that they were figuring out what to do with, and they're thinking they're going to pick the five most damaged businesses in town and just simply turn it over to them. So that would be nice. I wrote a little column for our February newsletter, so I urge everybody to go ahead and read that. And we have a nuisance advisory committee meeting tomorrow, tomorrow. Yeah, three P M. Thank you. That's it for me. Thank you. Councilmember Orr?
Um, I just want to say that I was in on the Thursday nights town hall and looking forward to the next one. There were, there was a lot of information on Thursday nights, especially from the SBA and a lot of from the earthquake authority things that you wouldn't think of taking care of and money to take care of it. That was actually very helpful.
Councilmember Wilson?
Um, the only I have is I got H W A meeting, but we didn't have anything significant to report. They're still trying to catch up on the last stuff in the next, I guess, February. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Orr. We didn't have an H T A meeting this month. I have to agree with Brock that the town hall meeting was really well received. Thank you, Kyle. Then I'm requiring all the key players that were there. I've heard a lot of good feedback that people got a lot of information. And when when they do have another one scheduled, let us know. So if I could like get it out into the public again so that people can listen to it. Nick down in the booth, what is Nick's last name? Do you know? Anyway.
He told me, I can't remember.
I I'm not for sure you would remember either, but he has been wonderful facilitating all the free food here in town. And I think they're staying through Friday, and it's been amazing, and we really enjoy it. I didn't make the fireman's meeting because they changed it from their usual time to five o'clock, and I was delivering food, so I wasn't able to make it. But once again, make that a wonderful job, and I I wish I would have been there to tell them. And the only other thing is our nuisance abatement at three o'clock. Come.
Thank you, and I want to reiterate what you said. I was going to actually bring up Nick as well and Coad. They have been amazing from from the start to the finish, from being there with help, with finances, with with support and with food. And Nick has been, he's been on this back end, and he's really been fantastic. The community seems to really embrace him. And Coad is really, they've really been amazing. Jen and Allison and Nick have really earned it. And Randy and she's are very good, too. And so I want to thank them. I have a Sasha Commission meeting tomorrow, Thursday, in Sacramento. And the executive director and the side safety commission engineer are coming here to Ria Del on Monday to kind of take a tour of what's happening. And hopefully, you know, we'll we'll be able to get to their areas, offer any help that they can. So we'll definitely be showing them our sewer system and hoping close their fingers that they can at the very least support us in our push for help. So that's that's all I have, and I hope everyone is after the earthquake, having the best possible beginning of the year of a disaster that they possibly could. So thank you, and is there a motion to adjourn?
So much.
A motion in a second. You adjourned until February? February seventh?